Moving on, we have with us this evening our town accountant, who is here for his performance review and salary discussion, David Castellaren. One thing I'd like to say before we start is just that.
It's not on your agenda.
What? Yep. It is on your agenda. One thing I will say is, there is actually, we don't have a formal process, so one of the things I talked to Dave about, because we have both the town accountant and the town administrator, who are under our authority in terms of performance reviews, and because performance reviews now need to be done publicly. We're going to do this one sort of more as a, David's going to give us an overview, we can have a discussion about strengths and weaknesses, he can give us sort of his thoughts on ideas for his department in the future, for his position in particular. But I think going forward, what I'd like to do is start a cycle, because we have a new TA hopefully, starting the beginning of the year, that the next review cycle would be in June. We're going to make sure that those things get on the agenda now for twice a year, and we'll try to come up with some sort of, which will come back to the board for approval, obviously, on another agenda, some sort of process for a review. I know when we did the superintendents, we had, you know, the superintendent filled out a self-evaluation, we all got to read it, we understood what the goals were, so that when we were doing the evaluation, there was some basis or knowledge, you know, prior to the actual evaluation versus just sort of sitting up here talking about somebody's performance. So I would like to, in the future, between now and then.
Just one suggestion or something that is nice in an organization like this, especially for the roles you just mentioned, is a 360 review, where you get, where you actually solicit input from the people that are working for, you know, the employees as well as from the board.
Yep. So this, as you know, or if managers know, there's many different types. So I think maybe we'll pull together some different options, and then put it to the board, and the board can decide how they want to proceed, and then we can get that into our policy, as this is the policy of the board, to use this format for the reviews of the positions that are under our purview. So that will come to us future, but we didn't want to put off Mr. Castellaren any longer, so. David, if you'd like to come up? Yep. And we saw some of your work in our packet here, so, let's go.
It's been a busy year. Very busy. Well, this is, as everyone saw, this was part of the main document that I was working on, most of this summer, adding certain policies, and it was a anti-fraud policy, the expense reimbursement policy, credit card policy was done by the Treasurers always, but all built in there, and a total rewrite of the policy book. That was one of the major accomplishments over the summer. When I took this position last year, I was told that, you know, everything was running pretty smooth, and cash was reconciled, receivables were reconciled, and it was just kind of a walk-in and takeover, and when I started, I found out quickly that it wasn't like that. Receivables weren't reconciled, I think going back to 1991. Cash wasn't reconciled for over two fiscal years. The town took a hit on the free cash, over $50,000 for not being reconciled last year. So, we had a lot of work to do, and I'll just go over some stuff, and some of it's pretty straightforward, and, you know, I'm not here to throw anyone on the bus or anything, but these are the things that had to be fixed during the year that were fixed. So we have funds for everything, we have general fund and we have special area funds, so when I refer to a fund, it'll be a specific fund. Fund 6.03 was missing a budget, that was corrected. We corrected the accounts payable process, whereas we had a lot of problems with our vendors not being able to match up bills to, or invoices to what they were billing us. Came to find out that there was invoice, that we weren't using the invoice numbers that were on the invoice. We were just making up invoice numbers from number one, all the way through the end of the year, and we sent out to vendors, so when they go in their accounts receivable system, they put us in with that invoice number, and it's not there. So we fixed that process, we cut down on a lot of the voids, and the checks, and so forth. Like I said, I created and placed into effect an employee expense reimbursement policy, an examination of previous reimbursements, some didn't have any proper backup at all. A lot of them had, we were paying sales tax out to people when we should be paying sales tax, but there was no receipts, or no canceled checks. That has been fixed, we have proper backup now for everything that we send out on. One of the major things was FY '18 residential taxes that were committed, but it only showed one commitment on the books. The second commitment hit the previous fiscal year, and it was backed out on the general entry, but the correct general entry wasn't made in fiscal '18, so it was only one commitment, we had to fix that. As of now, the town accountant wasn't signing off on any financial contracts. Now, my office is, I'm signing off on all the financial contracts, approving the availability of funds. That hasn't, that wasn't being done. I found two school PTOs that were set up in Munis using the town's '04 number, that was corrected. We corrected multiple years of police time on green, closed out stagnant general, special area funds accounts of $118,487, which was closed out to the general fund, which will help increase our free cash this year. This one was pretty significant, and I'm not, and I don't know why the auditors didn't catch it, but our books were out of balance by $2.5 million when I started. That's a combination of FY '17 and FY '18. It had to do with the due-to-from accounts, which is pooled cash. Cash is held in one account, then you have a subsidiary cash in all the accounts, they're out of balance by 2.5. What happened was the due-to-from, however you set that up when you transfer money for each fund, it automatically moves the cash. They weren't set up properly in Munis, so we fixed that, and then had to make the general entries to fix the $2.5 million. My first week here, I had issued a 1099s, which was an adventure, you know, doing it, we don't have pre-printed 1099s, we had to print them on the old forms and not on the Munis forms. Had budgets to previous town meetings to Munis that weren't there, I had a budget for FY '18, FY '19 for Chapter 9, corrected costs charged since the incorrect year. We instituted the form and policy for calculating enterprise fund indirect costs, completed and filed the town Schedule A to the town revenue, that had an October 31st deadline, that was done after I started. We had to cut over $700,000 in FY '19 budget. We added the FY '18 revenue budget into Munis. I added codes into Munis to, when you see the recap, this third page has all our revenues and is categorized right down A through, or 1 through 24. I put codes into Munis, now I can run a report, and it automatically does that and filter right into this report for us, no questions asked, now we can run year-to-year budgets on that and see where we're at throughout the year. There were a lot of FY '18 general trees that were not made, there was a stack about this much. Corrected the FY '17 accoumrances, which is money that was from FY '17 that was brought into '18 to pay for outstanding bills that didn't come in, they didn't balance out. Any accoumresses were being paid directly out of a control account, which you're not allowed to spend out of a control account, you have to use an expense account, so you have to make the general tree budget amendment and all that stuff. By paying out of a control account, it's not, now it's not being reported on the Schedule A, it's not being reported on the end-of-year report for the school, so we fixed that. In the process of correcting the town's vendors, over 3,900 vendor files are out, out of 13,331 need to be corrected. We're still working on that. We reconciled FY '17, FY '18 capital accounts, closed out the backflow prevention fund into the water enterprise fund for $131,150. That should have been closed out when the enterprise funds were adopted, and it wasn't. We had Munis training for employees on federal 1095Cs in order to meet the deadline. Trained police and arena personnel to process their own invoices in Munis. Like I said, cash hadn't been reconciled, so it is now reconciled through the two years. Receivables were not reconciled, those are all now reconciled, so they were off the books, but they weren't off the collector's side, and once they vote, comes from the assessment, they have to come off the collector's side. That wasn't done, so now they're totally off both sides of the books. We closed out all revolving funds that were not allowed under match general law, 44, 53 and 1/2. We added revolving fund law, bylaw, to comply with match general law. I know the stolen community TV was here tonight, but, you know, I have to pay them, and they never submit any of the reports that they're required to submit, so I contacted them, and we do now have reports, and every my office has any moment to see them. We do have to think of that as another department, because they are getting $400,000 to $500,000 of our revenue each year, and now with the law change, we now have to decide if we want to adopt a certain revolving fund to keep the 10% into a revolving fund, or let it close out to the general fund, and we can discuss that at a later date. We issue weekly year-to-year budgets to each department. Like I said, we wrote the town's fiscal guidelines, we presented a five-year forecast, we established an FY '20 budget guide for all the departments to follow for submission of budget and articles, corrected the FICA deductions that would be taken out of paychecks, we're not allowed to pay FICA, we were paying FICA, plus we're paying, taking out of them, plus we're paying out 6.2%, which, we're in our own retirement system, it shouldn't have happened. And we've upgraded Munis to the forms package, and hopefully, the next week or so, we'll be printing on the new checks. We were just handing out paper advices and so forth, and hopefully, we'll be going to electronic email advices in the next few weeks. So that's a quick kind of update. It's long, it was a lot of work, but it was a busy 12 months.
I bet. Could you speak a little bit to the budget process too? You know, the budget that you submitted the first year, it was much different than what we had been doing for many years prior, so, for the budget.
Budget book, oh. So the budget book was, I can't take credit for that, because Al was already working on it, but the funny part is he got it from another town, who used my budget book to get the award from the GFOA, so it was kind of my book anyway, but that was submitted. We're waiting to hear back the results on that. The budget this year, when you see it, is going to be a totally different look budget. It's going to have every single line item that's in Munis for every single department. It's not just going to have salaries and expenses, you're going to see every single category of expenses that each department has. It's going to be more transparent than, I think, ever before, and the summary page will even be a little bit cleaner and neater than what you used to see, and that's all been redesigned. The budgets for this year came in, and they were $2.4 million over. We had made cuts and looked at revenue and increased revenue where we can, and so forth, so we're down to about $43,000 left to cut. But again, there's some major cuts that we had to make, and we still have to discuss them and go through them, and we won't know until the governor's budget comes out to see really where we stand with the state aid. We're budgeting a 2% increase, and that, I think, it's only about 1.5% with the increased assessments, so hopefully that'll put us over the top. But again, and every day, we've been shorthanded too, down a position for six months, so Al and I, myself, have been picking up, paying the bills and so forth, and payroll, so we finally hired someone, we're hopefully having him start in January 2nd, and hope us help.
Great. So I'll open it up to questions from the board, I just want to say, you know, that is a lot of work, and, you know, that is a lengthy list of things. I know that, at least for myself, I appreciate the fact that you've gone through so diligently and made sure that we are up to date, especially in terms of national law, that what we're doing here matches what state law requires, because I think that's obviously a critical You know, your position, similar to the Treasurer's position, you know, if things aren't going well in that office, the wheels can fall off the bus pretty quickly, so it seems to me that you and Al have a good relationship. You know, he has said, you know, that he's learned a lot from you, and I think that it's, from what I've seen at least, really produced a tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time. I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions or comments that anybody would like to make.
I just have, I have a bunch of questions, and you'll have to forgive me, because my town email is not working, I've been in touch with Tom, so maybe you've sent it. Could we get that list from you in email, that list that you read off tonight?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So, I tried to write down what I could, but we used to get a monthly report that gave us sort of a variance between what we're budgeted, what we use, and anything significant that took place. I don't know if that's a possibility, I know you're having more staff come on.
No, we do that, I give it to each department every week, I mean, I could give it to you, like email Dave.
It was just nice to get it, because you see the red or the black, and you kind of had an idea where we were trending, and what departments were in trouble, and so on and so forth, because sometimes our votes impact, you know, departments. And the other question I had was, for compliance reasons, the annual audit, you said they missed something, the last auditing group missed something, so could we at least maybe even talk about this at a later date, because your position is unique, it works directly for the board, could we get at least a follow-up when the audit team comes in, in terms of what has to be reconciled versus what hasn't, and your action on it? So if they come in and say, hey, for instance, the $2.5 million item that you mentioned, if it was listed, could we get what the town has done to mitigate that risk after the audit is performed? I don't remember ever receiving that, and I sit here tonight saying, there's been so many audits, we spent good money on the audits, and we really don't know if anything has been reconciled from the audit, at least my experience with audits was, I was given like 30 or 60 days to reconcile every item on the audit, and I had to submit it and it had to be approved, so I just don't know if all those audits, if everything's been resolved from them, and I don't want to hold you responsible for them, because I don't think that's fair, you've had a lot on your plate, and you've done a good job. But at least from the last audit, could we get what was cited as non-compliance and what was, how it was resolved?
We, well, we changed audit firms, so they're actually starting January 9th, the audit firm.
So maybe moving forward, you know?
And I could tell you it's going to be a more in-depth audit.
Okay.
And I'm sure there'll be a lot more findings just from preliminary audit work that they've done. They've found, or made some comments that the other audit firm hasn't made, so once we get this audit out, then we'll follow up.
Yeah, even if it's moving forward, I just want something that says, we identified it, it was corrected, the town's in the clear on it. Is the arena still accepting cash down at the arena, do you know?
I don't know if they know.
Okay, that's an item that was on one of the audits, this is one, I don't think it was last year, I don't think you were here, but I think that was a concern.
The arena has to, they have to accept cash, because the high school hockey games come in and you have to pay cash.
Okay, but I'm talking from vendors, more or less.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay, so that was something that came up on a previous audit, I probably still have that. Do you have, is there a system now that is there to establish the accuracy of recording work hours in the water and sewer department, because that was in one of the audits too?
Working on it.
Okay, you're working on it, that's cool. Okay. So you talked about the annual budget, I'm sorry, but just trying to jot down what you said. When there's going to be a fluctuation, and Anthony always references this and says, well, it was in the budget, the people that come to town meeting, if there is a fluctuation in the budget, whether that's an addition to the budget or a reduction to the budget, could that be distinguished in the line items that you're referencing? In other words, we added a bunch of positions to the school department, I think the residents should know when we're investing in education, and I don't think people know exactly what positions. For instance, you know, a town department, your department now, you have a person in there, so I think they should know, it should distinguish, okay, the budget was $232,000, it's now $272,000, that $50,000 equates to this.
So, not this budget.
Okay.
When we do next year, we'll have all the salaries broken out by position, we just didn't have time to do it this time.
So it's not going to be in this year's, okay.
It won't be in this year, but it'll be broken down, so like if we go into the police or the fire department, it's going to say how many chief, lieutenants, captains, and alowards, go, toormen.
That's good information.
We'll do that, they'll have the number next door too, that will break down going forward, but not this, this year.
Okay, I know I have some more, and I'm sorry, like I said, my email's down, and I don't know if you sent that document via email, had a chance to look at it, but in terms of implementation dates for this stuff, I think, I would feel much better if we had some, like you just said, it's not going to be in this year's budget, if we had some implementation dates on when we're going to have this system established to record the work hours in the water and sewer, and when we're going to have a stronger policy in terms of accepting cash and stuff like that.
We're working with council, because we have to, we're trying to see if that's being negotiated into contract, the timesheet, so.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's something.
Okay. I'm sure it's a priority for you, and I know it's a priority for me, so thank you. And whatever else I can think of, I'll try to get over to you. That was just notes from your presentation.
This is really about Dave's performance, so if we could keep our questions to his performance.
Man, chairwoman, I think in terms of trying to be able to rate him on his performance, my issues would be some of the financial matters.
I didn't stop you.
No, I know you, and you never do, and you give me a lot of respect, and I appreciate that, but just in order for me, I have to know, and I'm a trust verified kind of person, that these items have been resolved in order for me to rate his performance, and I appreciate his commentary, but I'd like to see it, which is why I asked for it in writing. Thanks.
So, thank you for all your work. Before I jump into some of the comments that I prepared, I just wanted to point out, because I felt like, your answer, not going to say your answer was incorrect, but it was not exactly, it sounded like we weren't going to have major variances in the budget until another budget year. This was from the budget that was presented this year in town meeting, that showed in very great detail all the variances, including positions. So I think you were talking about breaking this down at an even further level by showing, like on a per-position basis, salaries and expenses and that kind of thing, but I just didn't want this to get lost, because I actually thought this was a great.
This will still be available, it's just not, you know, next year, this won't be needed.
But it very clearly stated sort of what were the major financial differences, and what were the position changes per department.
The budget that's coming out this year, you'll see, the first column is going to be, it's going to be the actual, not what was adopted, so you'll see the actual expenditure compared to what's been adopted now.
Okay. So, wanted to thank you, and I tried also writing that list down and failed miserably, because you.
I can, I'll send it to Dave or so she can.
Rip through very quickly, I did have some things though, that I wanted to pull out from a strength, and it was just kind of where you started from a strength perspective, and sorry, area of improvement perspective. The focus on policies and procedures has been something that is just refreshing to see. I didn't capture close to as many as you listed off, but I am aware of, you know, managing the way expenses are managed, the cash management policies, petty cash policies, credit card policies, so you're definitely taking a look and making sure that we're doing things correctly and being compliant. We talk about policies all the time, and when we, it's great to talk about them, this is one of the few times I've actually seen them being driven, and so I really appreciate that. And yes, there are, I think, there are bigger ones that we need to do, but these are the ones that are very much in your control, and thank you. The strong use of technology is another area that I've seen as a concern, and I know, you know, we've supported a number of upgrades to Munis, and, you know, everything down to having the check processing right there, so we don't, you know, it doesn't take three weeks, or two weeks, or whatever, till the end of the month when we get the statement, we know immediately where we stand financially, and that makes a big difference, I think. And it's immediately into the computer system, so it's not like something can happen, I'm not saying it does, I'm just saying, you know, it just, I think it gives people confidence. Obviously, I worked with you on the long-term financial policy, and I can't say enough, you came to the table prepared, you had strong opinions, but you also listened to the group, which I think is exactly what you should do. And, first time I've seen a five-year budget in stone, you know, I hope that's something that continues. So there's a lot of firsts, I guess, I'm going through, I won't read through everything here, but you get the idea. Always hate doing this, but the areas of, you know, areas, and I've spoken to you about this, so, you know, I think change is hard in an organization, and, you know, trying to figure out how to correct things and to roll that out to people is a challenge, and a number of the things that I know you did, I know you did, because I heard about them through employees saying, hey, what's going on here? And just trying to figure out how to roll things out in a, in a way that supports the people who are, who are on the front line and doing the work, I think is, you know, don't want to change the fact that they're rolling out, just want to figure out how to do it smoothly, and guess what, no matter how smoothly you do it, there will always be some concern and stuff, but that change management, I think, is very important, and understanding the impact on others. And a couple of things, just like the, just like the, on the long-term committee, I think there are a couple of things that have been rolled out that, and maybe I'll talk to you about this online, offline, but a couple of things that have rolled out, that maybe we should look at tweaking potentially, so, minor, they're actually really minor, but it's the type of thing that, they're really minor, but they really are annoyance to people, and I'll talk to you about that offline. But, big picture, at least from my perspective, I've seen the late hours, I've seen you and Al here, like I'll come in on a, not on a Tuesday, and you guys are here later, obviously, in meetings until nine o'clock at night, and I've seen the commitment to the town, I've seen the results, so, you know, overall, very positive, and thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Dave, obviously, thank you for us updating everything, honestly, it's changed when you're coming into a new town and everything, and when you try to implement change, that's probably the hardest thing, when people are so used to doing things a certain way, it's, like Anthony said, it's always the delivery, it's how it's being delivered to the employees that aren't ready for a change like this coming off the bat, that's probably the hardest adjustment for most people. Delivering it might not be hot, but kind of the way it is delivered, probably, you know, we're not all perfect at our job, when we got to explain ourselves guilty as sin when it comes to this stuff, but the good thing about your department, I know Al's been there, and I know he's been a big asset to it, which is great, I want to give a shout out to him, because I don't think we had in this year before, I know Ronnie was here, and then Donnie came in, but I think Ronnie was just helping Donnie to become the permanent town accountant, so I think having the assistant has been a great.
He's helped us tremendously, I tell you.
I mean, that takes a burn, because, could you picture doing everything?
No.
By yourself?
No.
That's, you know, that's, it's good to have him. No, I just want to thank you, because, I mean, you know, the way Anthony brings things to the table, I know you two have been communicating stuff, and you can tell the difference, and, you know, the numbers, and I know he's a finance guy, so I take, I take a lot of respect into you two as well, too. But all in all, I think it's been good, I mean, obviously, the changes you're picking up on in the policies and catching some things that were missed in the past, which, those numbers are kind of scary, to be honest with you, but I'm glad they were caught, and looking forward to it in the future.
But it's all frozen now, so it's going to be easy, right?
Yeah, I wish.
It should be, right? I mean, after you catch.
I think once, once we get all the upgrades in Munis done, and I get that extra person, I'll get that position filled, and I don't, we don't have to worry about the bills, that person will be cross-trained on payroll, so we don't have to have everyone running around, I think, I think it'll get a lot smoother, definitely.
Yeah, thanks.
So, I just have a couple of things, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put on both my hats. As an employee, it was hard, some of the changes, and maybe the delivery of how we were supposed were supposed to do things, so as an employee, people don't like change, or I don't think that's the right thing to say about the employees, I think they don't mind change, I think if they're just taught, or they're asked what is needed, and given instruction, clear instruction, and I think that was a lack for the employees and the pushback and a little bit of struggle. Putting on my other hat, the work you've done is fabulous, and I think moving forward, now that sort of everybody knows the temperament that we're moving forward and changing things, I think it will be better, and I think if you continue to make changes, and you're, again, communication, and it's not, I'm not saying it's all on you, because, I'll ask you a question, would you have come to Stonem knowing what it looked like?
No.
No?
No, and I think I made that pretty clear.
Yeah. The next question is, you're staying, you want to stay, you want to see this through.
I do.
Okay, that's good. So, going back to the, maybe the leadership wasn't, you know, as strong as it could have been in helping you make all these changes, but we're moving forward. I do think the employees will do whatever is asked of them, I think they just need an opportunity to learn it, hear it, understand it a little bit, even in the stuff that I do, I didn't understand why I was doing X, Y, and Z, but once it's explained, and the reasoning behind, okay, no problem, and now it's a piece of cake, it's, you know, so for me, that was just the glitch. I know we're not talking about the budget, but from sitting over there and watching these meetings before, years ago, the budget was too big, and too, too many pages to understand, I have to agree with Anthony, this was nice and clean, and granted, we want to see detail, I just don't know that I need to see, actually, I shouldn't say that, because years past, I did see everybody's, at town meeting, the book was this thick. I don't know that we need all that, maybe you have some copies, but for the people who come to town meeting, I think what was presented last year was great. I will need to see more in-depth detail, and anybody who wants to see it, by all means, should have access to it, but that's another discussion. So, I do want to thank you, because I do think, you know, if there was stuff that we weren't doing by law, that wasn't right, and you fixed that, and cleaned up a lot of stuff that probably hasn't been touched for 20 years, so, including your office. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, you know, from my perspective, having worked with several town accountants over the years, I think that it is helpful to know that, you know, you've sort of, you came in, and you went through from A to Z, right, like, really just updating everything, getting everything in order, making sure that everything is done, you've been fantastic to work with at our tri-chair meetings, making sure all the dates actually make sense for the timeline of the budget, and working all of that out, having you in the room is extraordinarily helpful in terms of the budgeting process. And we laugh, right, because we'll say, he'll talk, and I'll say, wait, you're talking about numbers, I'm talking about people, right? I think of you like the surgeon, right? You're more like the surgeon, you're not the doctor who's going to come in and be all warm and fuzzy, you're the surgeon who's going to come in and say, here's what I have to cut out, right? So, it's that kind of, that's your mindset, your mindset isn't people-focused, your mindset is numbers and making everything, you know, it's a really good process. It's the way you process.
Wish I made the money of the surgeon.
So, I understand your philosophy, and I understand the mindset that you bring to the table when we have those discussions, and so that's why I think it's so great that we have the relationships that we have, because the people that we're working with, you know, you need that balance, you need the feel-good human side of it, but you also need the person who's going to say, but these are the numbers, and this is what we can do, this is what we can't do, you know, but you're always willing to try to find that path towards yes. So it's not just that you're coming in and striking things, you're working with us to try to find a positive path forward towards the goals that this board has put forth, and I think that's to your credit, because a lot of numbers people have a hard time with that transition, but sort of when you, when we say it, you laugh, and we say, okay, all right, you're right, all right, let's move on. So I think it's a good, it's a good balance, and I think there's always got to be that, you know, that push and pull, give and take, and you're right, I think the biggest thing when you first came on was just communication, you know, people are going to be resistant, you know, you're going to want things done your way, how it gets communicated, and I think, you know, most of that stuff has been ironed out, and it's like any new position, you know, you've sort of got to get, I think too, for you, and this is in no way an offense to town employees, but every business, every municipality has a culture, right, like there's this sort of culture of employees, and they have a way of doing things, a way of reacting, and a way of handling stuff, and for you to have to come in and try to adapt to that culture while making really, really substantive changes, I think is extraordinarily difficult, and the fact that you've maintained a lot of good personal relationships speaks to your ability to do that. So I think that is to your credit, that you've been able to overcome that, to be able to implement some very, very significant changes in a very short period of time without completely putting yourself on an island, I think is to your credit.
Madam Chairwoman, just in terms of vote tonight, where I think there's at least some sentiment and agreement here that we have, we'd like to receive these accomplishments in writing, I mean, are you going to require a vote tonight, Madam Chairwoman?
So, I don't know that there's a, I mean, there's a vote if we want to, I mean, if we're talking about increasing salary, or whatever.
That's to my point, yeah.
You know, I haven't heard any motions, I don't know what the budget is, we know what your current salary is, I didn't look at your contract, David had expressed to me a desire to potentially sort of change his role a little bit in terms of his title, and sort of what that encompasses, I don't know if you'd like to speak to the rest of the board about sort of your thoughts going forward, we'd be happy to entertain that, you can probably speak to it better than I can, in terms of the difference in what the title is, and going from like a town accountant to sort of more of a finance director.
Yeah, yeah, everyone knows that, I was town accountant in Swanscott, and then was made the assistant town administrator slash town accountant. That role has become more predominant now, Burlington has that position, Swanscott still has that position, but is now called assistant town administrator for finance and administration. That was kind of my onset, you know, I'd negotiated contracts for years, actually pretty good at it, too, because I was kind of looking at that role, you know, seeing more of the finance and kind of that way, but again, you know, finance director, whatever, it's, you know.
Did that title change the company, a salary increase, it just seems like it would be the obvious question to ask, if anyone else thinking it, but I am, so.
Yeah, and I don't know.
I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss or not, but.
And that's, you know, these things are always awkward, because we have to do them in public, so it's not something that, you know, it's something we have to do in public by law, so.
What are you looking for?
I mean, I guess, yeah, there you go.
There it is, what are you looking for, Dave?
It's hard.
It is.
Very hard, I know, it's getting rid.
It is, you know, and it's.
It's hard for you, it's hard for us, so.
You know, I looked around the surrounding communities, you know, and everyone knew what I was going to get before, and again, like I said, and I've talked to you, Caroline, you asked me tonight, is, would I have come here if I knew it was this much work? No, not for that pay. But now that everything's fixed, and we're starting along smoothly, and you look around the surrounding communities, it kind of justifies that number that was opted for, you know, and I know it's a significant number, but I think with the quality of work and the long-term staying here, I think it's a number that you have, like I said, if you want good people to stay, you have to pay them, and, you know, you're finding out now that what positions cost, and, you know, I know it's a struggle with the budget, but you know, we have to find a way to make it work.
Shelley, just two more comments to Mike Boyden, I want to thank you for being honest, that takes a lot of courage, being honest, and I appreciate that, and I also want to thank you, Madam Chairwoman, because in the past, we've missed deadlines in terms of reviews, you seem to be on top of it, and that's where we want to be, doing what our responsibilities are, setting clear expectations, you know, and so everyone's on the same page, so there's, you know, protection for the taxpayers, protection for us, so thank you both.
Yeah, so.
Just a question, I mean, about changing the role, and I'm not going to say this, because, you know, I think we should definitely entertain that conversation, but do we want to do that before a new TA comes?
And that is my concern, I don't think that we do, and my other concern is, you know, just.
Talking about that long, anyway, hopefully.
Right, right. I would, what I was going to suggest, because we haven't had a lot of time, you know, we're just hearing this presentation tonight, instead of jumping the gun or doing anything specifically, we're going to have a new TA, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I would like to revisit the salary issue with you, if the board is not agreeable to doing it this evening, I'd like to set a date certain so that we can have that discussion with you. And it might be better had maybe, I'm thinking maybe the end of January, just so that.
Assuming that, assuming we have a new TA on.
Assuming we have a new TA on, have this conversation about salary, when we have a more clear picture of, you know, a little bit more clear picture of the budget, and sort of where we are going forward.
Correct me if I'm wrong, to your point, any salary increase would be effective June, July 1, or?
I think that would be dependent on how promoted.
There's time, there's time, yeah, okay.
I mean, if we did anything right now, it would have to come out of, it would have to come out of this past fiscal year's budget, right?
Right.
Or out of our current fiscal year budget, so if we did do something going forward, and I, you know, I think that there is absolute, it's my opinion, what you have accomplished, and going forward, I feel that discussion is warranted about an increase, I don't know that we're prepared to vote on the increase tonight, I'm not, and you have my word, that we're not going to keep kicking the can down the road, we will have this discussion, we will make sure that it's done within the next month, month and a half.
It's got to be in the budget, anyway, so it has to be done.
Exactly, with that in mind, so that we can go forward, so, unless somebody has another motion that they want to entertain, or.
I just have a question, so, the dollar amount you're looking for, we'll call it X, you are the accountant, is the money there, is it doable with all the other stuff that we're looking at as well? It's there.
Going to be the dissenting voice, again, just not against anything against you, but you raise fees, and you really gutter, when you say there's money in the budget, you just, this has to, in another meeting, we have to see it all, it has to be out there, you know, the public's a little bit, you know, anxious, you know, so I think, just take a step back, Madam Chairwoman, to your advice, and just revisit it soon, and find the funding source, and have that presented, and take a look at what's left over and stuff like that.
Absolutely, I guess we have to do it with you, we have to talk a number, we have to, we have to agree, we have to see it in the budget, we can see other.
But, but my commitment to you is that we will absolutely revisit it.
So the funding would come out of that position that hasn't been filled? So we have one half-year salary now paid out.
Oh, okay, so we do have money in?
My budget.
The current budget to address?
Correct.
Okay. That's a different story, okay, thank you.
I'll make that motion, and we'll just listen about a month, so.
Second?
You'll stay. You'll stay.
For a month, Madam Chairwoman.
At least a month.
Just one, what is the contractual, what are the dates on Dave's contract? That's a great point, just.
Dave, I did pull it, did I?
So the contract, if I can say that, that contract is not the actual contract that I was, goes going back and forth, so, you know, I started without a contract, it took about two weeks to actually get that contract, so it was just signed, it's not anything that was what the original, the contract I agreed to was, but I signed it just to.
So, and this is part of the, part of the issue.
So the contract I had had certain pay raises and a certain dates, and that was what was agreed to, but when I got here, there was no contract, it was still being worked on, and.
So you were going back and forth on a copy of something?
Right, but I already gave my notice, and started here, so I started on the contract.
Who are you dealing with the contract with? Who are you talking to?
I'm talking.
Town administrator.
Shelley, is there an end date or a start date? Is there any dates on the contract at all?
It's January 22 of last year for three years.
For three years, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
And honestly, I mean, I entertain if you want to extend to, to your home use.
To extend.
They've been both five years of my contract.
So.
Can I just ask? That maybe we have Attorney Galvin?
Yeah.
Give us a good contract?
Yeah, maybe we revisit, we could.
Maybe that's how we can talk about the.
Why don't we consider opening the contract back up and renegotiating that? I think that makes.
Actually, and if you have correspondence on a different document, can you also send that to Mr. Galvin, because I'm very confused by the.
So it took so long to get a contract, that I sent a new, I sent my own contract?
Yeah.
And then that was what was going back and forth, and then when I started, the original contract came back.
Well, there was one put in front of us.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, so that's the one, but that wasn't the one I was negotiating with.
So the one that was put in front of us?
It's my fault, I mean, I started a contract, and I had to sign it, so.
So the one that was put in front of us, the town administrator was working on a separate one with you?
Right.
Is that what I'm hearing, yeah?
So.
That's a, that's a problem.
Again, clearly, we need a new, a new, better contract.
Before that, to the chair and to council, just with the communication, just so we know what, because this is all new to me, obviously, and then I don't know what the process is from here.
I think what we need to do is ask council, we'll ask council for guidance, right now, what we have as a motion on the floor is to revisit this, I think, I would ask the board that we, instead of putting this off for a month, that we do a new motion to bring this to Attorney Galvin for his review, so that.
Documents, like the.
With whatever, with whatever supporting documents that you have, so that we can actually look at what was bargained, and Attorney Galvin can look at it and see if.
I mean, whatever lies his opinion.
Yeah, exactly, I completely agree.
Madam Chairwoman, I'll withdraw the second, my second of the motion, if Judge, you want Judge to withdraw the initial motion?
Yeah.
We can withdraw that motion, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. Yeah, all those in favor?
Actually, can we just define, I'm sorry, can we define what that motion?
We're going to read, yes, I would, I'm asking. I would, I'm asking that the board make a motion.
Pause.
To get all the information from Mr. Castellari.
To Mr. Galvin.
To Mr. Galvin for a review and that we revisit this issue.
Before rescheduling, she wants a review with Council.
I want a review with Council.
You want a review with Council, then when appropriate.
And then when appropriate, the schedule, yeah.
The scheduling motion, for the record, was the withdrawn motion to revisit it in a month.
Right. I, I'd like to revisit it sooner because I would like Attorney Galvin to.
You get the reason.
How's you going to give everything over?
No, I'm saying, you get the reason why. I mean, that's, that's something, that's, we have to.
I mean, clearly, if, if there was, if there was terms negotiated with you.
After.
Or in, in your mind, in good faith, that the contract, your current contract does not reflect.
Right, I mean, everybody knows how, how, every time that contract, you had to throw a little thing in there because it wasn't missing out the original one and you start this whole time because we want to just find it.
Okay. So, let's revisit it, let's have Attorney Galvin look at everything. That will give the board a better idea of where we stand in terms of pay scales and if there were supposed to be increases that we are unaware of. At least we can see that and make a better, I think a better decision for, a better informed decision for us, for the taxpayers and for.
Keep in mind, oh, because back then I didn't know what the job was.
You didn't know what great people were.
That's why you got to read the fine print.
Also, I like the original contract too as well.
Yeah.
To see what we originally signed and what we originally.
Yeah, I think I.
He said that to me, yeah. I got, I got that.
Maybe you got an original review.
And then we'll, we'll, we'll definitely revisit this. I will check, touch base with Attorney Galvin tomorrow.
Probably by our second meeting in January.
I would say, yeah.
Before our second meeting?
That, that will be the goal, before the second meeting in January. All right. Does anybody have any last?
You only have a first on that motion.
Oh, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, so late.
No, I'm sorry. Oh, my God. I'm used to it.